... agenda for council work session for May nineteenth. It is little after six P M. Town Hall complex in Bay Harbor, New York. I'd like to call this meeting to work. If we could, anyone would like to offer up an invocation? Council of Browns, maybe?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Father, I thank you tonight, as always, to you, raise the prayer signal and love that you show us every day. Pray, Lord, as we enter into discussions, have conversations about what was best for serving the people of our town. And your spirit be with us. Help us keep you in mind, Lord, and work together in our spirit of peace. In your name, Lord Jesus, I pray.
Amen.
I have three pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gabriel, if you want to.
All stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item up is new business. I have a discussion related to proposed revenue bond for water and sewer infrastructure improvements. Turn it over to the floor over to Mr. Luckadoo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back at the annual action item work session that we had, we had kind of a joint conversation about the American Rescue Plan dollars and some projects that we need to do coupled with the ability to start a new revenue bond for some of these projects. Right now, let's take the American Rescue Plan money and let's set it aside. For the moment, there's still a lot to be determined for these funds and what they can and can't be used for. What we're coming to you with tonight, based on the discussion we had last time, is for a request for a new revenue bond for the town. We are looking at revenue bond that's going to cover some water and sewer improvements to our system. What we are proposing, based on the discussion that we had last time, there may be, we kind of had the discussion of three point two million dollars or four million dollars. There was some back and forth on that. After evaluating, reviewing everything, looking at everything, we are coming to you tonight with a request to move forward with a twenty year, four million dollar bond. We reached out to BBNT Governmental Finance, our revenue bonded, our bond attorney, did some searching out for best rates among other people outside of government finance, BBNT. And what we found was that BBNT Governmental Finance had the lowest rate of three percent on the twenty year bond. So that would increase our annual bond payment from the current price that we pay each year roughly around two hundred and seven thousand to two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. So what would these improvements pay for? The items that you see in green are things that we know the price is for already. They've already been bid or they're going to have to roll over into this bond from the previous bond that we had. I will start at the bottom. The remaining debt from our twenty fifteen revenue bond that we have to install the water and sewer infrastructure in the industrial park. We have seven hundred and ninety thousand remaining on that revenue bond, so that money would have to roll over into this. We have bid two of three proposed projects at the wastewater treatment plant. You will see them at the top in green. And that's the headworks project, which, as a reminder, we have eight hundred thousand dollars in grant funds from Rural Infrastructure Authority towards this project. But what you see in green is what would be the town's portion for that project. So this bond would include those. Floating aeration basin one is a C D B G funded project that we have. We have around three hundred and ninety five thousand dollars for that project and grant funds. The town's remaining portion would be two hundred and thirty one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents, based on the bids received. With that said, as I just reported to y'all, Laxton County C D B G has awarded us another four hundred and sixty two thousand dollar grant towards the installation of aeration, new floating aeration in basin two at the plant. Now, this project has not been bid, but based on the cost estimates that have been put together by Mr. Schumpert and our engineering firm that's been working on putting these projects together, we're looking at a potential cost for the town of a hundred and eighty eight thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. And then lastly, the discussion last time was about, do we use American Rescue Plan dollars to pay for half of automated meter reading? And we pay for the other half from in a revenue bond? What we've come with tonight is, let's just allocate the remaining money after we do these items in green and floating aeration basin two, and let's look at fully funding the automated meter reading system in this revenue bond. Okay? So the next question that you may be asking, and I'm going to try and head it off, is how do we come up with the extra money from two hundred and sixty nine thousand to two hundred and seven thousand dollars that we're paying now? The, as we discussed last time, I can't guarantee you by installing an automated meter reading system that we're going to see a certain percentage of revenue come into our budget from lost water. And I'm not going to begin to tell you a percentage of what it is. But what we did was, we've talked with some automated meter reading companies about what they typically see. We've gotten ultra conservative and used a two and a half percent recovery of lost revenue. And that comes up with fifty three thousand of the sixty two thousand dollars that we would be shorting. Okay, we feel pretty good about that two and a half percent that we could see that. That leaves about nine thousand dollars that we would need to come up with. Well, by doing the wastewater treatment projects in this revenue bond, we are going to be able to substantially lower the maintenance and repair costs that we've seen in the wastewater treatment plan over the years, which most of that repair cost has been related to the aeration equipment at that site. So we believe we can easily pull that nine thousand by reducing that line item down and come up with the additional money needed to make a two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollar bond payment. Any questions on this so far?
What's the interest rate of twenty fifteen bond?
That was two point, that was a ten year bond, but it was like two point three percent or two point five percent off the top of my. I know it was two point, might even been two point six percent. It was somewhere in that range. But that was a ten year bond. And he said that rate was, as a matter of fact, two point two, three percent just click. He said by going to the twenty year bond, he said if we were doing the ten year bond, we would still be, we would go down into the two and a half, maybe around the same range as where we're at now. But on the twenty year bond, it goes three percent.
Another question is, the numbers that we saw on the other slide are already reduced by the C D B G grant?
That is the town's portion in what we will have to pay.
The nine thousand is enough if you're saying you want to replace with. Is that the chair alone?
It's mostly labor. Tim, you might get a way in on it, but.
How did you figure labor?
So the orbital equipment that we've had for years, the slingers, as I call them, it just fire spins and spins, spins, slings it all around. They use shafts with bearings and gear drives. Well, all of that equipment's very old and it's been rebuilt many times. And what's happened is those basins are concrete. And those basins, over time, I mean, they shift and they settle. And what's happening is it'll break a shaft, it'll break a bearing, or it'll bust out of the gearbox once the concrete settles. When they come back into basin, they have to use these, this padding material to build it back up and even everything back up. But again, it continues to settle and shift and those shafts, just to replace some of those shafts, they have to haul in cranes. Those shafts are really expensive. We're talking about by floating aeration, we're getting completely away from that.
So you're talking about the labor of someone else doing the work then?
Yeah, our staff cannot, cannot make those.
We staffed the staff, you can't say staff's money.
When it came to the old aeration equipment, that is something we're not capable of doing because they have to bring in full sized cranes to lift these things. Any more questions on this so far? Okay. So with that, I know I hit it in a nutshell. Some of us have had some discussion about this and there was discussion at the last meeting. We've shown you what would be included in it. What I need to know tonight, we're not taking the vote because this is a work session, but I would like to know if there is a consensus among this group to proceed forward with this revenue bond. Now, couple of things to note. Our bids on the top two items in greens inspire June setup. Okay, and once they inspire, it's wide open ballgame for prices to drastically increase. Okay, so we've got a short period of time to make the award for the contractor, to notify them and to get the contract signed. Our recommendation, if the consensus of council is to proceed forward with this four million dollar revenue bond, is that we have a special call meeting on Monday night and we come in and we will, we will do two things related to this. One, we will award the contractors and Tuesday we can notify them of the awarding. Second would be first reading of the ordinance to move forward with the four million dollar revenue bond. To do a revenue bond, you must have two readings of an ordinance in the public area. So I would, I would ask that Monday night we do a special meeting to do those two things. From a revenue bond discussion standpoint, I'm open to questions. That's what we're looking for. That is staff's recommendation to proceed forward. From this, we get all of the wastewater treatment plant improvements. We funded automated meter reading system and we carried the debt from the whole one over. Is there anybody that, let me ask, is anybody that's.
Is AMR A M I or is AMR?
A M I. I can tell you now, if we proceed forward, I do not want a dry fire system. I want a system that has an antenna here, send signal out, send signal out with the meter, the meter sends signal back. It comes back here and we can set it up to do it hourly, we can set it up to do it daily, twice a day. We can set it up to read however we want to. But I'm not looking to have to put somebody in a vehicle with the equipment to ride down the road and receive it. I would rather push a button in town hall and it's done within a minute and a half or so. Again, right now, this is about getting the funds for an automated meter reading system. There's still work in the process of what we would have to do. We would have to bid that project, we would have to come back to council for awarding that project. But this is just getting those funds available for us to afford. So any other questions related to this? This is what we have tonight related to the revenue bond.
Is there potential for grant money to be awarded toward that project in the future as far as we can see from this point?
At this point, we have not identified any grant funds related to this project. I will tell you, this is, this is considered cosmetic if you want to. It's not cosmetic, but it would be more of a cosmetic type of deal. If we want to go and put, you know, three million into improving our wastewater treatment plan and the operation of that, it is way easier to get grant funds from that for that than it is to get an automated meter reading system, which is more about providing just efficiency and productivity, not as much operational of our system. So I'm not saying there's not a potential for grant funds. It's not anything that we've been able to put our fingers on that we would be likely to. All right. Well, if y'all don't mind, I would like to set up a special meeting Monday night to bring these items over for, for a first reading and a. All right, well, thank you for that. I'd be Mr. Mayor, I think I'm ready to move.
All right, I'd be tonight. Presentation discussion of the draft budget for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two.
Okay. All right, to begin with, I just wanted to highlight some of the across the board changes that exist within this budget. Tonight, again, each of you have had the budget, there are budget highlights in there. I'm just going to recap those items that are the most important in the budget, that are the biggest changes, things we've asked for, and then if there's any questions following the presentation, I'm certainly happy to discuss those questions. This budget does include a two percent cost of living for all employees across the board. In addition to the cost of living, the state people did notify us that they were doing a one percent increase on the employer portion of the state retirement system this year. That was something they had put in place for eight years in a row, they were going to do one percent on the employer. Boy, COVID hit, for the past two years, we have not had that one percent applied. So this year, they are back to applying that one percent. I think this will make the fifth, I'm pretty sure I'll tell them ahead of this, would be the fifth one percent increase that we've seen on that. Also, all of the annual action item plan issues are things that were brought up at the annual action meeting. All of those have been funded within this budget. And lastly, I'm proud to say that with all that, this proposed balanced budget has no proposed increase in taxes, fees, or any other charges. We've been able to do it without having to bring that recommendation to y'all, which I know is good for everyone y'all. A quick overall highlight of, of the overall budget. We're looking at an eight point five billion dollar budget this year, eight hundred and five hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred and fifty one dollars with evil expenses, and that's among each of our funds, general fund, enterprise, hospitality, and the victim's assistance. And just, and I want to make this point, in twenty fourteen, me and Tega the other day sat down and looked at this. In twenty fourteen, I can speak for when I came in, just kind of looked at where that budget was. Back then, I believe it was around six point seven, six point eight million dollar budget. So we have seen some tremendous growth. I know hospitality taxes at five hundred and sixty five thousand has played a big part. But even when you take that out, we have seen some growth in our budget over the past seven years. To paint a better picture of the breakdown of our overall budget and how, where do our expenses go? To highlight, in the overall, this is out of that eight point five million dollar, the police department's around twenty six percent, being the largest percentage of our budget, all the way down to victim's assistance, which is, is so small in comparison of eight point five million, it registers as zero percent of our budget, but it's not actually completely zero. I believe this wasn't there, I just wanted to highlight this on the screen tonight. Moving into the general fund, four million, six hundred and seventy six thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars of the overall budget. You will see it on the presentation in front of you in your packet. This is the breakdown that shows department by department within the general fund, what the allocation is for that department. Some of the revenue highlights, we did see, and we feel confident that we can increase our property and vehicle taxes by combined eighty thousand, six hundred dollars this year. A lot of this new construction has kicked in, that money, revenue money has started to come in. Part of that is going to be the, part of that is going to be the reassessment that was done with the rollback to ninety nine point five. On the business license, y'all will have seen that we took that up by around two hundred thousand dollars this year. One thing to point out was this past year, we have been budgeting around nine hundred thousand dollars for business license revenue. Well, because of COVID nineteen and the impact and us trying to play conservative on the revenue projection last year, we took that number down to eight hundred thousand, not really knowing what impact COVID nineteen was going to have with regards to business licensing, if business is closing, how long they close. So by doing that, I will tell you, the revenues coming in have not shown that there is a reduction or a negative impact. We are actually trending higher than what we have in previous years. And I will tell you, the couple of years leading up to, before we reduced it when we were budgeting nine hundred thousand, we were bringing in over a million, or right around a million dollars. So that's why you're seeing that line item go up by a couple hundred thousand dollars this year. And the next thing, with regards to the recruiting and retention officer that's at the Bay Harbor, New York High School. This is the last year of that position one hundred percent funding. However, this year, that funding will run out with about six months remaining in the budget, which brought up six months of where the cost comes back to us. So we sat down with the school district and we had a conversation. We looked at the previous numbers of students that have been enrolled and going through the program. COVID nineteen certainly had an impact when it shut school down on that program. Let me slide over. You're fine. Okay, COVID nineteen did have an impact on that program, just as it did the school because children were not allowed to go to school for the last half of that year. And we think it played a part in the numbers that came through this year. Now, next year, I think we've seen, is it thirteen Jake, that we've had new enrollees into the program that are slated to come in this next year. So we sat down with school district, we started looking at all of this and through our discussions, I mean, we certainly would love to see that program remain because we do believe it's going to grow. We do believe it's going to build. We do believe that it gives kids who may not, are teenagers, who are getting ready to graduate, that are looking for skill sets to go out into the workforce and to be able to go out and hit the ground running. We believe that this program can be a valuable asset and will grow. With that, through our conversations, we talked to the school district and we agreed to split the remaining six months of this year fifty fifty on that position. Because certainly when school lets out that, he'll be working full time with us through the summer. Tony, y'all don't hurt. We'll try not to hurt Tony. So the cost to us would be around twenty six thousand, two hundred dollars. The cost to the school district would be around twenty six thousand, two hundred dollars. So that's where that increase in the S R O fire recruiting and retention line item. It was, is it six months?
The grant expires in November.
So about seven months?
Yeah, the money is probably going to run out a little bit before that, but, but we factor that into it because it's not quite twenty thousand.
I rounded to six. I'm sorry, seven or eight months.
About a hundred and four thousand dollars a year?
No, sir.
No, half of, that's half, that's fifty two thousand for. Yeah, I don't think it was. So fifty two thousand for six months, my math says a hundred and four thousand dollars. It's twenty six two for us, twenty six two for the school, and that's about fifty two four for six months.
About fifteen to twenty.
Yeah, but you're taking in healthcare, you're taking in salary and wages.
Retirement, all benefits.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was all benefits.
Yeah, I think the money runs out.
Twenty five, that's thirty percent. Okay, all right, I'm not going to argue.
It was closer to about three months of funding, even though the grant expires in November. I think the money might run out a little, it's probably going to run out early. So that's somewhere between five to nine months.
I know we worked, we worked, we worked it out in an Excel spreadsheet and, and we sat down with the school district and looked at it. And when we took the amount of time remaining, it was twenty six thousand, two hundred. And you were saying six months, it must have been more like eight months that we had to fund or nine months that we had to fund, based on the grant money granted. I know that, I know that number's correct, the months is what I'm not getting at here. All right, the safer grant reimbursement line item was reduced by forty two thousand, eight hundred dollars for this year. And that's based on, Jake, you want to explain that? You wrote that, you got that grant.
Yeah, there are two safer grants. The safe grant that is being decreased is the remaining of Tony's, the recruiting and retention position. There's, like I said, the grant expires in November, the money will probably run out in September. So that's the difference that was from last year's budget to this year's budget.
Finals, insurance, state fines, we've certainly seen this line item over this past year greatly decreased. A lot of the reason for that was due to the courts being closed due to COVID nineteen. We did feel that we needed to bring those line items down some though, based on what we, we're seeing coming in prior to COVID nineteen. And even now, what we're seeing coming in, we did feel that those line items needed to be reduced some this year, even though the court is back in operation. And next is the E nine one one reimbursement line item. You will see an increase in revenue of forty eight thousand for that line item for this year. And what that's based on is the state is moving to a centralized dispatch type of system where they have hubs and all the P S A Ts are tied into a hub. They're going to maintain the equipment moving forward, they're going to do that stuff. But we have a forty eight thousand dollar expense that we've got to do to upgrade our system to be able to take part in centralized dispatch system. So it's one hundred percent reimbursable. While we have forty eight thousand in expenses for that, we are also going to be reimbursed that forty eight thousand dollars from the state. Moving into the council budget for next year, the biggest significant change in this was the fact that there is an election coming this November. This is not an expense, this is an expense that we have to have in our budget every two years. Looking back at what we've done over the past few elections, we felt that thirty five hundred was a good budget amount to put in for Lexington County to, to run the elections for the town. So you will see that in this year's, next year, that will be taken out of the budget. The administration budget, our H R payroll director has informed us that she is going to retire the first part of September in twenty twenty two, not this year, next year. Our H R position is, has many duties, payroll being one of the most important. But in processing, there's a lot of components that go with the health, management of the, the health program for the town, making changes to health plans and all this stuff. We feel that we need to bring a new employee on in January to begin learning and get about six to seven months worth of experience under her and training under her, so that when she does retire next September, she will be able to walk out the door and we can feel confident that that job can continue at a high rate. So we have recommended in this budget for that H R person to start. For the fire department budget, in the salary and wages, we are requesting a part time fire marshal to be brought on for the town. Doing fire inspections is something that, especially on our general assembly properties, our restaurants, the Walmarts, the shopping centers, the grocery stores, these high assembly of commercial uses, we have got to at least do them at a minimum once a year, but preferably twice a year, getting out doing the fire inspections. But every business in town should be touched at least once a year. That has been proven difficult to do. I know when Jake was chief, Jake would try to balance in and get so many inspections done over the course of a month, and it was a challenge for him. I know that Josh, our fire chief now, the way Jake explains it, Jake was actually certified to do it. The fire chief by the state of South Carolina law does not have to go and actually take the class to become a certified fire marshal. He is what you would call ordained as a fire marshal when he becomes chief with no formal training. We feel that we would like to have a part time fire marshal come on board who's certified in it and can put their sole focus on doing so many hours and so many number of fire marshal inspections on a monthly and annual basis to try and stay on top of that. The fireman's compensation, Chief Frye did request a couple thousand dollar increase in the volunteer fireman compensation for this year as our departmental volunteer numbers grow, as the number of calls grow. What's starting to happen is they're starting to see smaller checks because of those items. And he was just asking if we could get a couple thousand dollars added into that this year, just to try and bring that number back up. It helps with retention of volunteer firefighters. We are having to move to new reporting software in the fire department, the existing software that we have in Firehouse. They are no longer going to provide this software. And so Chief Frye went out and investigated some different. And so Chief Frye went out, investigated, uh, some different softwares, got to Lexington County. They were with Firehouse, they're now, uh, converting over to emergency reporting. He liked that software, so you are going to see an increase for new software to be used by the fire department. Um, another issue relating to vehicles, um, we operate a lot of old halogen lights on some of our old trucks. We've had an issue with these halogen lights, uh, burning out a lot. Uh, they're becoming more and more maintenance and repair. They have asked that we move to converting the LED lights on those trucks and moving away from the halogens. We did fund some additional money in this proposed budget to to upgrade the lighting on some of the fire trucks. And you'll see an increase on the, uh, capital line item for the fire department as the cost of a lot of this equipment continues to go up like everything else. Um, we've got to allocate a little bit more money for the replacement of hoses or the replacement of bunker gear sets. Um, I think we've replaced five sets of bunker gear each year, um, a good bit of hose. And this year, they need to replace some ladders, um, and some other tools that that are not working well. So that's the fire department highlights. The police department, um, we have seen, uh, better retention within the fire department over the past year. Um, and in doing so, we have seen that number grow in what needs to be funded in that line item. So you will see an increase in the police department salary and wages line item due to to better retention. You will see a fifteen thousand five hundred dollar increase on the computer and material side. There are, there are some upgrades that need to be done to, um, servers, they need to purchase some new servers, but also their malware uh, security systems and some other security systems need to be installed on their IT equipment to ensure uh, the threat from any, any viruses and things like that. And you will see a capital increase for a new patrol vehicle this year. Um, we had been on a point where we were trying to buy one to two police cars every year. Um, I don't remember, uh, the new dispatch system when we had to do that kind of knocked the, knocked us off that train that year from buying one or two new police cars. And once that happened, we had not gotten back into that rotation. We would like to try and at least get one car into this budget for this, this fiscal year to replace.
How much is a car?
We, thirty-two thousand nine hundred that I think we put in the budget, off the top of my head, I have it right in front of me. About thirty-two nine. And that, that's the same number that we use for the lease purchase.
And then about five thousand dollars in equipment, um, from the additional equipment. That's what we did.
That's for the lights and the lights and whatever.
Yeah, thirty-nine five.
Thirty-nine five, that's, that's with the five thousand for equipment that needs to be done. I had to, I had to be able, I had to be able to price them.
So Teddy, you did say like, you go sell the old ones and so on?
Mm-hmm. As a matter of fact, uh, Chief's got three of his new cars from the lease purchase coming in, it's a Thursday, Friday of this week. Code enforcement vehicle's been received, meter reading trucks being received. Some others are ordered, we may not see them for five or six months, uh, before they come in due to everything going on. But as they come in, um, we are going to get them ready and sell them.
Give them a run to the auction room?
That, that's our intent is to run the GSA rolls. On the non-departmental budget highlight, you will see an increase, uh, with this new lease purchase. Um, and as we stated before, we took it up to a little over four hundred thousand dollars on on that lease purchase, uh, which did lead to a little increase on the general fund side portion of the lease purchase. Uh, you will see that increase, I believe it was twelve thousand something off the top of my head, reflected for that increase. And also our general liability insurance, um, every year our modifier is looked at by our municipal insurance uh, through the MASCE. Our modifier has seen an increase just due to some claims here and there. Uh, and with that, we are having to put a, an increase on that general liability insurance for the town. Uh, that's the general fund. We'll move into the enterprise fund. You will see that that accounts for three billion two hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred dollars of the overall budget. And here's a breakdown budget, uh, department by department, ten to enterprise fund of expenses. Looking at the annual action items that that we discussed related to the enterprise fund for this year, um, we certainly want to finalize the infiltration and inflow study uh, that we have going on and evaluate the course of action based on that report that's given back to us. Second, we want to just continue progress on on finding that long-term sustainable water solution for the town. We want to finalize our TIS of our sewer collection system and and possibly maybe even look discussion we're having is once that's done, what's it going to look like for us to expand that to completely do our water system? Uh, we want to finalize the three wastewater treatment improvement projects. And lastly, we want to fund and install an automated meter reading system. Looking at the revenue budget highlights, uh, based on our analysis of what we're seeing going on with the budget, um, we do feel that we need to reduce the water sales revenue projections down a little bit. Um, that's just looking at it side by side through this point in the year, over the past three to four years and where we've been at. We may, I think the past two or three years, we've been slightly over on our budget revenues than what came in. So we do feel that those numbers need to come down a little bit to try and have a more accurate projection.
You said what, the revenues is, is coming down?
Yes, so answer the revenues, we're bringing them down. I think we were a little over projected over the past couple of years.
Harbor Watch is going up, but the overall is going down. Wait, you're selling? Wait, are we selling more water in Harbor Watch?
If, if I could get through mine, if we want to circle back, I'd like to get through the presentation and we can come back to this discussion.
I got COVID followed from when I, when I had COVID, so I, I, I can't.
We take a lot of this stuff.
We can write it down for you.
So the water, the water is, the water rate is going, the water revenue is increasing in Harbor Watch, right?
The water revenue?
Where?
I don't know about specifically for them, I know what our, for all water revenues doing.
Wait, but that's system two.
That's system two.
And the revenue is going up, right?
Again, all of our revenue comes into one water sales line item, so I can tell you.
So you don't know if this, if we sell more water, we're buying more water. That's what I'm saying.
And, and
Well, we're buying more water, that's what I'm saying.
No, I'm not trying to hide anything. What you're buying, you can look at, and I will touch on this in a couple minutes in my presentation, that we are paying more to Gilbert Summit Rule Water District for the amount of water that we're having to buy for system number two out of the building.
Now, what about Ridge Spring?
Ridge Spring, we have seen a significant increase in the revenue that's brought into them.
Because we raised the rates last June by fifty cents per thousand gallons.
And that is only one portion of the answer to the question.
Well, okay, that's a portion.
Okay, they're using more water.
Right.
And they, over the past couple of years, have been buying some of their water from Salute County and they're no longer going to be doing that. It's going to be one hundred percent less. So that's, that's another reason.
Okay, yeah, what about the in-town, uh, water? Their, their revenue, is it increasing or decreasing?
Again, I, our prediction in this budget
You can hit it back over again, but it's one of the
No.
The town revenue, is it, is it going up, down?
As I just stated, we are reducing the amount that we're bringing in in water sales in this budget because we've, we've over projected about over the past couple of years and we just want to bring it down.
Right, I mean, you don't want to get into expenses, I'm just saying.
I'm not being
We, we, we buy more water from Gilbert. Um, Ridge Spring is using more water, but the town itself is not.
Well, the Ridge Spring revenue is separated out from the water sales. It says online.
Okay, it says online, that line item is going up, right?
Ridge Springs is.
Okay. Spending more water, well, we buy more water, they go, we, we're not, we're reducing the amount of water that we're bringing in from the town. And in Ridge Spring, they're using more water. Or they're paying for more.
There is a line item for water sales, a line item for sewer sales, and there is a line item for Ridge Spring water sales.
Okay.
Okay?
But it's
Ridge Spring water sales, we are increasing.
Right.
Based on the factors that we know and what we see coming in. The sewer sales and the water sales line items, excluding Ridge Spring, both of those, we are bringing them down some because we have probably, we've been a little over on our projections.
So is that a little over on the projections or, or we actually not having, we're not we're not selling as much water?
We may not be selling as much water.
Okay.
People may be, be more conservative, I don't know.
Or the town might not be growing. Go ahead.
Could be. Enterprise fund, non-departmental budget. Um, one thing that hadn't been in there the past couple of years, uh, that you will see this year is as a part of the new lease purchase, we did have the purchase of a new meter reading truck and a new service by utility truck. So you will see that portion of the, uh, annual lease purchase payment included in the non-departmental budget for this year. And you also see the utility reserve account, uh, returned back to the six hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollar level as it previously was.
Now, that reserve fund is the money that we raise taxes, raise fees, and we will put it in the lockbox?
That's correct.
And we're not using any of that money this year?
That's right. Uh, as was discussed a couple of minutes ago, under the utility administration budget, uh, we are having to increase out, increase the allotment for the purchase of water from Gilbert Summit Rule Water District. This is not related to a price increase by them, this is simply more water is going through that meter. Now, to get on Councilman Hall's point, uh, we have identified that there is an issue with water loss on system two. If you ask us to put our Sir?
What's water loss mean?
That means, yeah, that means the amount that we are billing versus the amount that we are being billed by Gilbert Summit, there's a large gap between that.
And what causes the gap?
So we have been trying to identify all the areas that of concern that may be leading to this. One item is we, we have a significant number of water leaks that occur on an annual basis within the Harbor Watch subdivision. Um, number two, there could be, could be, being the word, some type of leak along the line somewhere on this system that's leading to that, that's just not been discovered. We don't know, it's a possibility. Uh, you do have some flushing that occurs with the, in that system. And also there is some, the Highway three seventy-eight widening construction work has been being done. And I know one time we called guys hooked up with tanker trucks, water tanker trucks, to our stand pipe that we have out there, filling their trucks up with water.
How'd you find that out?
Our guys sold them.
And which, what, what happened?
We told them they don't, they can't be doing that. So, um, but unless we have somebody stationed out there and stuck out there twenty-four seven watching for it, we can't necessarily always catch that. So there are things we're having to evaluate, we're having to look at it. Um, it could be putting a master PRV valve out there on that system to reduce the pressure on it to keep from having so many leaks in the system. There are different things that we're trying to do and we're trying to figure out the source of this difference.
I don't know if this may go home.
I, whatever, Tim, quick question for you. When, I know last year we had that, that water loss percentage that had to be calculated. Um, when does that do again this year? Just to see what's done this year that's right here on the ball, all time period.
So you have a percentage for that?
Uh, Mr. Schaller does, and that's something I can certainly send out tomorrow and follow up to this.
Okay, now how long has it, that we've been losing water out here?
Great question. I, I can't tell you specifically how long. I know that we've seen the, the, the amount purchased continue to increase. Um, how long it's been doing it, I don't know, for sure. And, and another factor, another factor that I want to put my finger on is there's been a lot of new home constructions and a lot of new homes built on that system too. Again, it's just another factor, I'm not saying that accounts for most of it, but you have a lot of
That section is growing. Since two thousand and sixteen, the number of tabs went from a hundred and sixty-eight to two hundred and forty-one because Harbor Watch got up and running. Uh, forty, thirty-seven of those tabs occurred between two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So yes, that area is growing and part of this water is being built out.
Well, and a lot, and another factor that that goes into this too is a lot of people used to use their lake homes as, as summer stay and now they've gone to full-time living on as well. That can be a factor also. Uh, uh, here's what I can tell you from a budgetary standpoint. Looking at what we're spending right now, that, that, that expense line item has got to be increased based on what's going on.
Okay, so now, we increase it. We know it's a problem, right? We're going to spend more money on the problem.
We first have to identify.
That's what I'm saying. So when, it's been going on for a couple of years now?
Well, I'm, I'm glad you knew that because I don't know exactly, I don't
Well, it's been going up steadily, right?
It has, it has been.
Okay, and so now that we know that there's an issue, what are we doing to address it?
Again, we're evaluating things and looking at what
I mean, we already know, but
I can't give, give you a defined plan of action tonight because I don't have a defined plan of action tonight.
There's money in this budget to cover possible repairs.
Yeah, so there's water line, we increased the water, uh, that's in the utility distribution budget. We did beef up the line item in that budget to account for the purchase of additional lines and materials for this year.
Yeah, I'm shocked that not developed, not for pressure reduction and contain
Right now, we don't know exactly what that cost will be, but that's something we can come back to council and ask for. It, it'd probably be pretty costly if we did a master PRV.
Yeah, I'm kind of shocked that you said that Ted, though, that we know there's an issue, but you don't have a plan to address it. That's, you know, that's kind of shocking to me. I think you just came to life.
Alright, for the wastewater, uh, budget, uh, we are seeing an increase in lab supplies due to increased testing. When all the BOD, uh, issues came about, uh, we are having to outsource some of the tests now that are having to be done. Um, and with that brought some increased expenses in our laboratory, uh, line item for the wastewater treatment plant. So we're having to increase, uh, that line item up. Our repairs and maintenance, um, because of the wastewater treatment plant improvement projects that, that we have coming up, uh, we do believe that we can bring that line item down some this year. We, I will tell you that we, we can't define exactly what we can bring it down this year. We brought it down to something we felt comfortable doing so and it would be realistic without knowing exactly how much we can reduce it, but until those repairs are made, we won't have a true understanding of exactly how much it can come down, but we were able to bring that line item down some this year. Sludge removal, um, has also been reduced due to the upcoming improvements. We're going to have a digester installed out of the wastewater treatment plant, which is going to help us with, with some of the sludge handling that we have going on out there and we felt that that number could come down as well. Utility maintenance and distribution budget, the biggest increase that had is you will see that we increased the, the water and sewer line materials line item, um, up this year. And that's just based on the amount that they're having to go out there and do and the amount of supplies that we're having to purchase. But also the cost of, it's kind of like the cost of construction materials right now. The cost of water and sewer line materials has drastically increased, um, over the past few months and the past year. And for the hospitality tax fund, uh, here's a list of the annual action items that were determined. Uh, finalize engineering and design for both the town hall parks, which is already, the funding's already approved for and is underway. Finalize the engineering and design of the town entrance signs, which should be done real soon, again, already funded. But projects, uh, hopefully be coming to an end here soon. Finalizing the engineering and design for the pine street parking improvements. And again, funding already approved for that. Um, fund and complete engineering and design for both downtown districts. You will see that in the budget for this year, the, both the downtown Pittsburgh and downtown Eastwood Business District engineering funds are in it. Uh, fund and complete the engineering and design for Woodard Unity Park, you will see that the funds needed to do that are in the hospitality tax budget for this year. And identify locations, bid and consider funding And identify locations, bid and consider funding for some of the new town entrance signs for this year. We did not allot specific funds in the bu- proposed budget to actually construct the signs because we, we don't know what the exact cost to construct those signs are going to be at this point. This is something, if we can identify the locations and we can bid the project this year, we can find out what the cost is. We can always come back and approve funds to purchase however many we see that we can do or want to do based on what the bids come back in. And the last one is to begin the H tax bonding process for funding improvements, uh, which we've engineered. So January first, we are eligible to go to, to bond off of the hospitality tax. Um, certainly we'd want to begin that process to see how much we can and we are able to bond worth of improvements. And then we're going to have to sit down and discuss each of the projects that are engineered and which ones we want to do or what portions of which ones we want to do. That's something we're going to have to sit down and have a discussion about, um, to see the direction that council is going to go. So with that, I have run through the highlights of, of each of the budgets. Um, and you've had a chance to review them and at this time I would entertain any questions that people may have.
I understand the question about since we just did the H tax. So am I totally saying that, that H tax committee was to meet one time? Give us a list of things to do and they never going to meet again? I'm just trying to get some clarity. We're not going to beat this horse. They're not going to meet again, right?
I, I cannot speak to whether the H tax committee.
Council has not established an H tax committee. There is not an official H tax committee in existence. It has not been created by council.
We have.
Is that a true question? Is that a true statement? Is there an ordinary creation?
We have any questions about the budget, guys?
That is the budget. We just budget.
We just, that is on the budget. That's the H tax. Budget line item for the H tax.
That's the budget for the H tax. That is, that is a question about budget. This is what I'm asking. Is the committee going to be?
I, I don't know where the committee's funded within, within the hospitality.
Why, I mean, why, why does the committee have it funded?
I, I will, Mr. Kane, and if I will, I've, I've heard, I've heard this comment in the past.
There's a couple of questions. Are they going to meet again or not?
I don't know the answer to that. I have no, nothing to do with that.
So when we can move on without them ever meeting again, so what are you saying?
They are, they were an advisory group that was established to bring forward ideas for the use of hospitality.
What they were forward there. Are they going to meet again?
I'm not a part, I'm not a part of it. I can't speak. I'm not, I have.
They're not, they're not going to meet again. Okay, let's move on.
Okay.
How many total part-time positions are we adding in this budget?
So in this, we are looking at a part-time, uh. Fire marshal. Fire marshal.
I'm bad at adding. How many?
It was a part-time fire marshal and then we were, uh, at, doing the six months of the HR, but that's not part-time status. So a part-time fire marshal.
So you only added one position?
And now again, we, we put allocated.
Was there one in the works in the enterprise fund?
Sir?
Was there one in the enterprise fund?
So that was the use of an existing meter reading position, turning it into a part-time locator because of the current setup that we, we currently have. Um, if we're moving forward with AMR, AMI, we, one of the things that's fogging our utility distribution crew down significantly is upwards from, Tim, tell me if I'm right here, anywhere from forty-five to seventy-five locates a week that they're having to do.
I think our average is about a hundred and eighty a month.
A hundred and eighty.
What's a locate, Tim?
So when people call pups, whether it's Starbucks building or somebody that wants to build a fence on their property or whatever the case is, and you call pups and you need to get line markings done. When you call pups, pups generates a work order. They will send that out to Dominion Energy of Mid-Carolina. They will send that out to whoever the water and sewer provider is, Spectrum, all these people. When they send that work order to us, we have to go out and mark where the water and sewer lines are at in the ground. And we have seventy-two hours to get that done from the time we receive the work order.
How long does the market stay on the ground? Depends on weather. I mean, are they painted on?
It's spray painted. If it's done on grass and spray.
Yeah, obviously what person, they asked the question.
If, if it's done on grass, typically it's spray paint shoes. If it's done on sidewalks or asphalt, it's not a chalk, but they have this other type of material that wears off after.
It's temporary.
A couple of months. It's temporary.
But you're saying a part-time locator is going to replace a full-time meter reader?
Well, that meter reading position ha- has been vacant, was vacant for a while. And then we got it filled and I think it, it exceeded that employee's physical limitations a little bit too much. And he decided to leave. So we have been operating for a while by using, uh, I think everybody's moving Bruce, it's reading meters. But then Little L has been reading meters. And when he's done reading meters, he goes back to the crew, but he's reading meters. If we're moving forward AMI system, and if this is going to be done within the next year and put in the ground, our recommendation and what we've discussed is to continue with, with Little L and Bruce doing the meter readings. And then, and use this other position for a part-time locator, somebody who comes in and handles that.
Maybe I didn't word my question correctly. So we're going to have a part-time locator by this, by the end of the call. All right, are we having one less meter reader from the budget than that thirty-five thousand dollars coming out of the budget? Or we, or are we adding to the budget for this part-time?
We're shifting that money from, from a, from a part-time, from a full-time meter reader to a part-time.
What's the difference? What would you give the difference?
Um, I think we had to give it to Ford.
We actually went up, uh, a hundred and three.
No, twenty-four, twenty-four thousand.
You went twenty-four thousand over budget. But if you take the actual, which is a hundred and thirty-four divided by ten, twenty-six, the actual is going to be a hundred and seventy, which is four thousand over budget for the year.
Well, you're, you're looking at the current year we're in.
Yeah, well, I'm, well, okay, I'm looking at the current year's budget, what you're spending this year and what you're going to spend next year. And what you're saying here is you spent a hun- you spent a hundred and thirty-four thousand, which is only ten months. So twenty-seven thousand more makes it a hundred and seventy-one thousand, which is five thousand over budget. And you're going up to a hundred and ninety thousand.
Well, throughout the year, and part of the reason we've had a couple of guys increase their certification levels or let that become pay increases for increasing your certification level, um, turn around the other. If you don't mind me.
Well, I got it.
Go ahead.
I got it right.
Jay Andrews. So let's see, they're already working the answering. You're not increasing the budget. Did you talk to me what kind of?
Well, part of that's two percent increase, part of the increase in, in employee certifications. And some additional funds for a part-time locator to relieve the burden of staff. So actually, yes, the part-time was in addition to, was in addition.
And how many part-time employees do we have currently total throughout the system?
I think we answered yesterday.
Yes, we did. My memory is.
I'm up here, I'm slipping.
I'm a senile man, I believe. I believe I have.
Two police departments.
Washington, Stephen, yeah, Washington, Stephen Police Department, the guy, uh, he cut it into littler control.
It was, it was, I think it was eight, one apart.
And then, and then the four.
Yeah, four.
Our department.
So eight parked out in police. Because we're actually going in to save money. Um, so look, some of our, some of our volunteers are paid guys in Lexington County. And when a firefighter wants to take a vacation, um, some of these Lexington County guys that work full-time, they will work a twenty-four hour shift at a lower rate of pay than what it would be for one of our pay staff guys to come in and earn twenty-four hours at overtime. So it helps to relieve that burden.
This is what I'm going to do. I have, I have problems assimilating the information. You do an estimate, you do an actual, which is only ten months. So therefore it's a little difficult to look at whether or not you're increasing over a budgeted number or an actual number, which I'm always, I've always insisted my people budget against the, what they actually spent, not what they budgeted to spend previous year. For instance, in the police department, I believe you have an estimated, uh, you have an actual of nine hundred and nineteen thousand, which looks impressive against the nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand budgeted. But if you extrapolate that out for the additional rest of the year, uh, I got an estimated actual of a million one hundred thousand, which is a hundred and five thousand dollars over budget for this year. And then next year we're increasing that, um, another amount to the total of, uh, one hundred and ninety, uh, actually you're increasing yet less than you're spending this month, this year.
Increasing yet less than you're spending this year?
Yep.
I don't, I don't know.
Actually, next year's salary in your budget is a hundred and one million ninety-three thousand dollars. Is that what's in, a million ninety-three? If you extrapolate the nine hundred and nineteen thousand that we've already spent through April, uh, you spend May and June. They take that up to a hundred and one, a one million one hundred thousand, all right? You're budgeting one million nine three thousand. It's a three percent, so we're.
So this was, then, so, so the actual that you have in there is not just ten months?
No, it's, it's got to be twelve months.
And, and, and what I'm saying is the number that's sitting in the actual.
Yes.
You're saying that's over ten months. That's actually another pay period into the month. So that's going to bring that number down some. Cause there will, that's reflecting another pay period into the month of May. Not, it's not just ten months. It's ten months plus another pay period.
So it's two months, two weeks.
Another pay period for the police department, which could be thirty-something thousand.
With, it's another two weeks, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm misunderstanding.
Around half years, four years, in between.
Oh, Darren, I mean, is, Dave, if we could have talked about this, we probably could have had a word with that. I mean, I'm just saying.
I don't know.
I, I can't, I don't have the, I don't have any.
All of these people are entitled to know what's going on. They may not give a shit. I don't know. Pardon my English, all right? But they may not give a damn, but I think they ought to know what's going on. One-on-one meetings are non-productive, all right? I agree. This is Mary. All right, but I'm just trying to see what's going on. Whether or not we're going to, we're visually are over budget, all right? And I'll back that up. Let me go play it some time, but we're visually over budget.
And you're talking about on the police department salary line item?
Well, that's plus overtime, plus.
There are some line items in a given year that go over. There's some that don't go in.
Every year.
You won't say for the police department that it is continuously going over budget.
I have nothing, if nothing is police department, I have no, if you want to put three million dollars in the police budget, all right? I probably wouldn't have a problem with it if, if you came in and said, we're going to get good service for it, blah, blah, blah. All right, I'm just looking at the budgeting process and what's going to be discussed three months from now or six months from now? And how are we going to control? I mean, you know, um, it, it's just, if I look at this year and take your three percent, I'm missing fifty-six thousand, you up next year's budget by fifty-six thousand dollars in the, uh, salary line item for the police department, which is more than fifty-six thousand more than your three percent increase. If you're increasing by three percent, you increased by three percent over what you said was this year's budget, right? I'm just looking at the numbers. They really, to me, they are fuzzy. But again, I'm a senile old man.
Back to the police budget over this year, when every, every year that I can remember, it's always been because of the culture, Coach. We had to do overtime, over twenty, thirty thousand, fifty thousand dollars over budget because of the, um.
I don't think we're over budget in the overall police department budget at this time, with people. Do you have the police department revenue in the stands right here?
Yeah, there's one there somewhere.
This was running, oh, that's June twenty-twenty.
There's twenty-twenty in there, there's a twenty.
Okay.
There's a twenty-twenty-one in there. Of course, if you're here, you can look online for a second. At this point in time, uh, we were running, um, the budget's one hun- one million nine sixty-five. We're running one billion seven eight three, which gives you roughly a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to operate. But you're telling me it's only six weeks for salary purposes instead of eight weeks, which of course will change the calculations, uh, some like. Uh, are we, are we going to be over budget? That depends on that, that missing two weeks. Because, uh, my analysis says you're going to end up, uh, roughly forty to fifty thousand dollars over budget.
There's another factor you can factor in and make that.
I understand.
No, if I may.
Okay.
You have five period, five period pay months, some months, and in the police case, you could have a three-month pay period. Um, that does happen from time to time and that can skew numbers, but then the next month or two months later, it levels back out. I'm not saying, and I don't have it in front of me right now on exactly everything laid out, the general ledger report to be able to look at this. But I, I just can't follow all the numbers that are being done and all that without being able to sit down and.
Are you going to be over budget in the police department's budget this year?
Uh, again, I go the full revenue and it's French report right now.
We're trending, basically, what I'm hearing with, by what I'm saying.
Well, my number might not be correct.
Well, in any way, what I'm, what, what I'm hearing is that we're trending to be over budget in, in the, uh, police department. I'm asking you, is that your, uh, uh.
That is, that does not normally happen and that's not a trend that I'm seeing that we're on.
So we, we're going to be, they're going to be on budget this year. They're not going to go over budget.
Again, without numbers in front of you right now, I can't.
I mean, also we're here for is the budget. We, we doing.
I'm here to talk about proposed budget for next year. I'm not looking at current budget for year.
Talking about budget, every single, uh, line item in the town's budget. That's what we're here to talk about.
You feel your numbers right here for police department, Dave?
I feel they're as accurate as we can get. There are certain things.
Are they over or not?
There are some. I have, I can't answer that question right now. I can't. I, I will tell you, when, when, when we sit down to do this budget, I don't want y'all to, that, that, our process is not to just. Excuse me.
When can you give that number two if I don't?
The real number that I'm interested in is how much are you increasing police department budget this year? And I'm not singularly asking police department because that's.
But, but they are about sixty percent of our entire.
Yeah. No, they're twenty-sixty percent of our overall budget.
Uh, you put the, you mix the general fund.
That was the overall, I said of the overall budget.
We, we're talking about, they not, okay, they two separate.
Okay, it, it, there's a graphic in there that shows you separated out.
Okay, and what, what?
It was, it was in the.
What percentage is it in the, in the general fund?
General fund.
No, what's up that with twenty-three percent?
It's a hundred fifty dollars. Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, forty-seven percent.
Okay, is that, yeah, but not twenty.
That's two six six.
Miss Kane.
Yeah, I thought it was not a condition. But the increase this year is how much?
The increase.
In the police department budget?
Um, it's, it's.
It's two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars.
Okay, and overall budget?
Overall budget?
Yeah, the overall.
Overall police budget is two.
No, 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 overall general fund budget.
It's right in front of you. All right.
Yeah, the overall general fund budget is four million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars.
Which is an increase of. Which is an increase of. You're saying it's twenty-four miles over, I have hard times following that.
What's that?
It's not directly in front of me, that's what we're going to, we're getting control.
So, our budget for, uh, fiscal year twenty, I would need fiscal, I would need fiscal year twenty-one.
Are you looking for fiscal year?
Twenty-twenty, I mean twenty-nine. This is twenty-one, twenty-two. Yeah, twenty-twenty-one. If I just say eight, twenty-twenty-one, the revenue will be back.
The only thing you can see is, uh, April because of.
That's not, but it's still with revenue, it gives a total, yeah, it gives you a total revenue budget. So, last million, last year was four million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars, so.
Four million one?
So, you're looking at probably a three hundred forty thousand dollar increase in the general, in the, uh, general fund budget, both estimate around about three hundred forty thousand.
What, the general fund budget?
General fund budget.
Alright, so, what, what's, how's that, what's the revenue?
I went thirty thousand, it's just around.
Okay. Now, what's the increase in the police department budget?
So, last year, so, you look.
It's two hundred fifty-one thousand increase?
Yes. And the overall budget is increasing, uh.
In general funds, increasing about three hundred forty-one thousand dollars.
A big portion of that, councilman, is gonna be, last year, we were, we went conservative, uh, on the hospitality tax.
How much did, sure?
Three hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred.
In the overall? And a big portion of that's gonna be the increase on the hospitality tax.
So, two-thirds of the increase will be in the police department.
Police department makes a high for our budget.
The two-thirds of the, and.
I was just saying, he said no.
And two-thirds of the increase.
Well, I meant three, two-thirds.
Well, you just said we're increasing at three hundred forty-one thousand.
Six hundred?
Huh?
Three forty-one?
Six hundred.
And the police budget is increasing two hundred and fifty-one?
Right.
So, what's two fifty-one to three?
You got a hundred thousand dollars plus.
It shows up somewhere else in the budget. So, my statement best, the police department increase is two-thirds of the increase in the overall budget is a valid statement. I agree, I agree with this, that it agrees. I, I would, alright, so, if, looking at the, uh, the budget for the police department, are they on track to hit that mark? Or are they gonna be over budget? This one, what do you see?
Have no idea. When I compared the numbers and so forth, they're, they're on the line to finish on the budget. Now, anything can happen.
Well, that's why, that's all I wanted, though, if they were, if they were on schedule, if it is on, or.
Two or three, minus two or three percent, yeah. But we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen between now. Well, I understand that, I'm just saying, we were just pulling teeth. To get to, to like say what you just said.
Cause I, I don't have that, the latest month revenue on his pension report sitting in front of me. It's not that I'm trying to avoid anything, I just don't have that information sitting in front of me, so I can't give you a straight answer unless I'm looking at the number. And I'm not going to give a straight answer.
That's why we're here for a budget meeting, so we can have numbers in front of us, and not speculation.
The revenue on his pension report is online for you to do at any time that you wish to do.
Well, that's what we hire a manager for.
I know, and I put it on the.
Okay, but, yeah, but what we asking for information, we don't want either of these guys to purchase, I mean, what's the hell is that?
I have a question about the allocation of audit costs. Uh, in the coming year, and current year, um, hospitality taxes are gonna carry one-third of the, uh, overall audit cost?
That, that's the way we have currently set it up, yes, sir.
Based on the complexity of the budget, that's not a realistic allocation, in my opinion.
Do you have a question?
So, motion to adjourn?
Salute.
First, Mr. Kane, Ross, and Mr. Kraus. All in favor, raise your right hand. All votes? Mr. Kane, yes, ma'am?
I think it's out of time, getting the no votes of yes, but.